Trustee Hinton had hoped to join by Zoom, but we're not able to reach her right now, so we'll deal with that in the second part of the meeting. So I'd like to call this meeting to order. The, let's see, it's the 723rd regular meeting on Wednesday, June 11th, 2:25 at 3:05. Roll call, please.
For the record, student trustee is vacant, and vice president Jenny Nicolau will be arriving a little late for the closed session.
And trustee Davis has arrived.
I see that. Trustee Aguilar?
Here.
Trustee Beggs?
Here.
Trustee Davis?
Here.
Trustee Garrett?
Here.
And board president Richards?
Here. At this time, we'll skip over 2.3 because we're not sure what's going to happen. The next is a transitional thing, 2.4. I'm going to need a motion that the Board of Trustees appoint interim chancellor Lena Tran as secretary to the Board of Trustees. Do I have a motion? And trustee Aguilar, second?
I'll second.
Trustee Beggs, please call the roll.
Trustee Aguilar? Trustee Beggs?
Hi.
Vice president, or President Richards?
No, no, yes, okay. Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
And trustee Garrett?
Yes.
The vote is 5-0. Motion carries.
Okay, moving on, any statements of conflict? Looking left, looking right, don't see any. Okay, now, the reason you all are here, we'll have a public comment. And I need to just remind everybody, four minutes, right?
Yes.
Four minutes, ask that you be respectful, say whatever you want, but try not to be attacking or nasty. I've been doing this almost two years, I haven't had to throw anyone out yet, so let's keep that record alive. So, madam stenographer.
So, the first, optimism one.
Good afternoon, Chancellor Tran. I did say Chancellor Yong, but apparently he's not here. And the Board of Trustees, here early to inform you about the YFA's and YCCD's progress in negotiations. YFA is pleased to have agreement on paying the same amount of hours to composition instructors who teach the same classes. We're also pleased to have agreement on paying full-time faculty for office hours during the summer. I do want to note, however, that in both instances, those agreements were to bring faculty to parity. In other words, the district had been underpaying us, or not paying us at all, and it has now agreed to do what is right and just. Wish we didn't have to fight for such simple changes, but unfortunately, that's how it often is. As for RSI, we have made substantial progress on the language regarding training, implementing, and evaluating regular substantive interaction in asynchronous online classes. However, we have not resolved the issue of compensation in exchange for the significant ongoing increased workload, as well as the limitations on academic freedom and the changes to the evaluation process. This is a critical sticking point, and this is why I've created a graphic presentation of why YFA feels so strongly that our ask of eliminating trailing median is justified. Can I hand these out?
They're going to explode right there, right? No bad substance, maybe not.
If you give them to me, I will. I'll distribute them. Thank you.
Okay, you'll see in number one that RSI is a significant increase in workload that previously did not exist. Five out of the six new RSI requirements are not even present on our current evaluation forms. This counters the narrative we keep hearing that faculty should have been doing this work already. You'll see in number two that the only other California community college faculty union that has completed negotiations for RSI received a $1,000 stipend for their training, an additional 2% salary increase for online instructors. And finally, you'll see in number three that YCCD has dropped in the CFT salary study from 38 to 66 out of 72 college districts. YCCD was also at 66 pre-strike. Yes, we will rise with the increase this fall, but that will likely get us into the high 50s, still far below median, which conflicts with the district's commitment to attracting and retaining quality faculty who are paid fairly for their work. Unfortunately, our proposal to eliminate trailing median has been resisted by the district's negotiations team, which is why both sides have agreed to bring in a neutral mediator in mid-July. But as you return to closed session, I hope you will consider all of the above, including my handout, in guiding your negotiations team. I also want you to know that YFA is willing to consider creative, alternative approaches to our most recent proposal. After all, we too want to reach full agreement for the training, implementing, and evaluating of RSI sooner rather than later, so we can then get all faculty on board and up to speed to pass our next accreditation visit.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next speaker.
Danelle Oliver.
Welcome.
My name is Danelle Oliver, and I speak to you today as a proud classified professional who cares deeply about the students, the mission of this district, and the work we all do together. When I heard that faculty are being offered an 8.709% pay increase while classified professionals, who are the backbone of daily operations across our colleges, are being offered only 2.3%, I feel this discrepancy sends a clear message: Our contributions are not valued equally. It felt like a painful reminder that our dedication and hard work are not being seen or valued in the same way. We show up every day, often the first to arrive and the last to leave, making sure students are supported, systems run smoothly, and services are being delivered with care and compassion. We don't ask for praise, we ask for fairness. All we want is to be treated with the same dignity and respect as our colleagues. Equity is not just a value to post on a website, it's something you practice in moments like this. Please choose equity, please choose us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Patrick Krebs.
And you're not on duty?
Not on duty.
That's like a first time, right?
It's actually my weekend.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, President Richards, Chancellor Tran, and fellow trustees. My name is Patrick Krebs, and I'm the immediate past president of CSCEA-YCCD, Chapter 420. I'm joining my fellow brothers and sisters in unity here at today, at the start of today's board meeting. I would like you to know that our chapter members are very disappointed in the district's most recent proposals for the wages and benefits article. We feel that the district is not treating us fairly, nor honoring the spirit of the contract. The parties have enjoyed the benefits of the Me Too clause that is currently in our contract. In the most recent contract, it was the district who proposed the clear and concise language of the Me Too clause in Article 112.1.1 wages, which states, quote, "The district shall grant CSCEA the same salary schedule increase and/or one-time bonus granted to the other bargaining units through the term of the CSCEA agreement dated June 30th, 2025." CSCEA agreed to the district's proposed language when it was negotiated. The language above is part of our current agreement. In June of 2024, the district knowingly entered into an agreement with YFA yielding a wage increase of 8.709%. We respectfully ask the district to honor the language, uphold the integrity of the district, by showing the classified professionals, all employees, and the larger community of YCCD that when entering into an agreement, it is done with full transparency, honesty, and a commitment to equity for all. Do the right thing by giving classified professionals the same 8.709% wage increase the other bargaining units were granted. I would like to deliver these petitions we have collected from our classified professionals. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll review, well, we will review those, thank you. Next speaker.
Those are all the speaker request forms that I received.
Is there anyone out there that would like to come up and speak? Please.
Lisa Shet.
Come on up, Lisa.
Good afternoon, and thank you for having us. I just want to make you aware that there are well over 200 petitions, unduplicated, that are basically following up with what Patrick has summarized, and we really, really would appreciate you taking that into consideration. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak before I close the public comment? Please come up.
Hello, my name is Elida Miranda Zaragoza. I'm a former MJC student, and one of the reasons why I came to work at MJC is because during my time here, I is because during my time here, I enjoyed going to classes, and I loved, you know, a lot of the faculty classes. However, classified staff really helped me in this process to be able to do my FAB stuff, let me know how financial aid works, to help me register, or if there was an issue, figure that out so that I could get out on time. I received a lot of mentoring from different classified staff, and I really wanted to come back and provide that to the students because so many students need that guidance, and classified is there to provide that so that they can focus on their classes and complete. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I'm gonna close the public comment. We do have a closed session. Could you please discuss what we're gonna talk about?
My time is up, sorry.
You didn't even start.
The board will adjourn to closed session to discuss items 3.1 through 3.4 on the closed session agenda listed on the June 11th regular meeting closed session. The time is 3:16.
And we'll see you back at 5:30.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the 723rd Regular Board Meeting for the Yosemite Community College District on Wednesday, June 11th, 2025, at 5:30. First order of business, trustee Beggs, would you leave us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
What? Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have a roll call, please?
For the record, student trustee position is vacant. Trustee Aguilar. Trustee Beggs.
Also here.
Trustee Davis.
Here.
Trustee Garrett.
Here.
Vice President Nicolau.
Here.
And Board President Richards.
Here.
Form is established.
And I have to do the thing for the video thing now, right?
So, yes, if we can go back to item 2.3 on the agenda.
A trustee, Hinton, is asked to participate via Zoom. So the recommended action is that the Board of Trustees, one, approves governing board member's request for participation in the board meeting virtually remotely citing the just cause or emergency circumstances provision of AB 2449 specifying circumstances relating to qualifying reason, or two, approves governing board member remote attendance as reasonable accommodation of ADA using AB 2449. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Will I have a second? Call the roll, please.
Would you like me to call on this one? So, sure. Who was my second, sorry?
That would be Antonio. Trustee Aguilar.
Thank you. Trustee Aguilar. Trustee Beggs.
Hi.
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
Trustee Garrett.
Yes.
Vice President Nicolau.
Yes.
And President Richards.
Yes, thank you.
Six zero in favor, motion carries.
So we'll bring her in now and I'll ask her some questions.
Trustee Hinton, if you could show your video and turn on your audio, please.
Trustee Hinton, we understand that you wish to attend the meeting remotely. So I have to ask you a few questions. First, are there any other adults in the room with you? If so, what's the general nature of the relationship with them?
There's another patient who's 90 years old. And so, then staff members that come in here, there's nobody else in the room.
Very good. Okay, we'll get back to regular business. There is no report out of closed session. Am I skipping around? No, we got no report out of closed session. Do we have any statement of conflicts of interest? Left looking, right. Don't seem to have any. Are there any requests for changes in the order of business? Not seeing any. At this time, we're going to open the floor for public comment. Before I do that, first of all, anyone that wants to speak, I want you to speak. I'd ask that you be respectful and stick to the time limit. And you will have no more than four minutes to speak. If you exceed four minutes, I will ask you to wrap up your discussion. We have speaker cards. Adam Stenographer, who do we have?
So there's a few that recognize, that would like to recognize our outgoing chancellor, Henry Young. So I will start with Teresa Gamboa.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Board and Staff and members of the public. My name is Teresa Gamboa, and I'm the chairwoman of the Woodland West Community, which is this neighborhood that you're all a part of and the neighborhood that goes all the way to Kansas Avenue. And we would like to express our appreciation of Chancellor Yon. We wish to thank him for his service to our community. We really appreciated working with him the years. We really appreciated working with him the years that he was here. We appreciate his support, his hospitality, and just being a great neighbor. And we want to thank him for working with us and helping us improve our community. We're sorry to see him go. And as a token of our appreciation, we have.
Yes, so please come up.
Something here for him to remember us by. Chancellor Young, we wish you the very best in your retirement, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Henry, stay there because I think there's some others. Go ahead, Graciela.
Thank you, Teresa, for all that you do, and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Jeremiah Williams. The Honorable Jeremiah Williams.
Let's not get crazy. Hi, Jeremiah.
Come on, which one of these are on? This one?
All of them.
All of them? That's two and three. Well, greetings to all of the board members and intern Tran. Pleased to see you again. I'm here also with a delegation from Congress. Come on up, please, really quick, which is Ethan Hunt, who's representing Congressman Tom McClintock, also Justin Farkas, and of course Lisa, as well, Justin Farkas, as well as Landon Whitney, who is with Assemblymember Senator, excuse me, Maria Alvarado Gill, and of course Congressman Adam Gray. I'm losing my mind here for a second. Because she doesn't look nothing like Adam Gray, but she's a good woman and represents him very well. And we will try to combine the four minutes. That way, we, I know you have a large agenda, so we'll start with Congress.
You can have more time for this. This is important.
Good evening. My name is Ethan Hunt. I'm a representative of Congressman Tom McClintock. On behalf of the Congressman, I would like to express our sincere appreciation to the Yosemite Community College District for the opportunity to speak in honor of Chancellor Young. During his eight-year tenure, Chancellor Young demonstrated a strong commitment to advancing the mission of the district. He worked diligently to strengthen the relationship between the colleges and the broader community, fostering an environment of trust, transparency, and collaboration among students, faculty, staff, and local stakeholders. Under his leadership, the district has supported the academic and professional development of approximately 30,000 students across both the Modesto Junior College and Columbia College. And that left a lasting impact on both the institutions and the regions that they serve. And so that is why, on behalf of Congressman Tom McClintock, we would like to present this certificate of special commercial recognition.
Hello, I'm Lisa Mantaro-Moore, representing Congressman Bradham Gray's office. Thank you so much, Chancellor, for your service to the district, to the students, to the community. It's much appreciated. On behalf of Congressman Adam Gray, I'd like to present you with this recognition as well.
Good evening. My name is Landon Whitney. I'm with Senator Maria Alvarado Gill's office. I have here a joint resolution with Justin Farkas.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. My name is Justin Farkas. I have the honor and privilege of representing the office of Assemblyman Juan Alanis, 22nd Assembly District, which shares a large majority of Stanislaus County with this, and parts of Merced County with the Senator's office. So just first, I wanted to point out really quick, Mr. Richards, well, excuse me, Mill, you want me to call you Mill? Your wife did try to steal your thunder over there a couple of weeks ago at Turlock City Council meeting. But we brought out the big guns and we brought out this dual recognition from us and the Senator's office in order to ensure that this meeting was just as special.
I'll note that you are saying that the state is more important than the city. I'll note that. I'll note that for my wife.
Not quite. That's not exactly what I said. No, really, we truly appreciate Mr. Young's work here with YCCD. His tenure began same time as mine here at, with YCCD. I began my journey in higher education with Modesto Junior College in 2017. And the greatest experience I could ask for as an 18-year-old student athlete trying to navigate this world as a first-generation college student, let alone. So thank you, and thank you to the Board for providing the leadership to ensure that he is supported and the YCCD continues to stay successful. Thank you.
Thanks, Justin. I'll be brief. I just wanted to also mention, I was lucky enough to start my educational career at MJC and just really have the sincere value of the institution and what it means and the opportunity that it provided to me as a student. So grateful for your leadership, grateful for your determination in tackling the challenges that I know higher education in this state, and particularly uniquely in the Valley face. So with that, I'll present with you, along with Justin, this recognition in honor of your tenure as Chancellor of YCCD.
And last but not least, the cities. Not Turlock, but Modesto.
Almost as good.
It's almost as good. I do want to thank Dr. Brian Sanders for prompting us to do this for you. Also, my tenure at MJC was in the early 80s. And my classes were gymnastics, weight training, and volleyball. Because I had already had a talent, and I started my business 39 years ago, and I'm still in it, so I'm very thankful for that. But the weight training, the volleyball, and the gymnastics did help me, even though I don't know if I feel that way today. But on behalf of the City Council, I would like to express my appreciation for your remarkable contributions to our community. I am grateful for your lasting legacy of service, excellent, student-focused leadership. Congratulations, and best to your future.
Chancellor, you can even have more than four minutes.
Dr. Richards, President of Board, trustees, elected representatives, I'm elected off. I just want to thank you for the honor that you have bestowed on me. I feel humbled. I'm glad to have. And I've always believed in the importance of serving the community and having a close working relationship with the community. So again, I thank you for this honor, and I wish you continued success in representing our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll. You're going to take some pictures?
If, so that we can capture this moment for Chancellor Young, would you mind coming up so that I can take a photo of you folks with the outgoing chancellor?
Okay, just to remind everybody, you have up to four minutes to speak. We ask that you be respectful and courteous, but we'll let everybody who wants to speak, speak. So, first card.
Salma Torres, or Salma Torres?
Welcome.
Good evening to the distinguished Board of Trustees. My name is Salma Valeria Torres, and I stand before you not just as a member of the LGBTQ+ community, but as a member of the broader community who helps bring inclusion and visibility to Modesto Junior College, as well as Columbia College, the second school in Yosemite Community College District. I am here as my capacity, in my capacity, as the Director of Education and Advocacy for Cal Pride, having worked closely with many queer students who attend, transferred, or have graduated from Modesto Junior College. Many of your students and alums are bright, driven, and able to achieve all that they set out for themselves because of the education and support which they have received at this fine institution. MJC is a place where students can learn about ethics that shape them into considerate and pathetic members of society who turn towards their fellow human beings with a helping hand extended, as opposed to turning their back to those who are in despair. As investors of our society, MJC's vision seeks to create and promote equity in education for every member of our diverse community. MJC's great undertaking is the creation of an educational community that uplifts those of us who are most vulnerable, underprivileged, and underrepresented in order to propel our society forward to create a more prosperous future that is inclusive of all identities. Identities that individuals should be able to wear as a badge of honor, as opposed to a mark of shame. In accordance with the Community College League of California, each elected community board as a unit acts as a community bridge and buffer, and is to create a climate for student success, among other duties. Thus, the Board of Trustees is responsible for ensuring that all students, regardless of race, color, sexual orientation, or gender identity, amongst many other identities, feel sufficiently supported to prevail in their studies during their time at this institution. In the coming weeks, there will be a formal request made by the LGBTQ+ advocates here at Modesto Junior College's campus to fly the pride flag. I ask you, as a member of MJC's community, to fly that flag in order to stand up for a community of individuals who are already under attack by local, state, and federal politicians who offer us as a sacrificial lamb in order to keep their seats, as opposed to carry out the duties as is entitled and their responsibilities and expected of them by their constituents. Now more than ever, the LGBTQ+ community needs our allies to stand firm alongside us as we fight against hate and bigotry. We continue to fight not just for our rights to a safe educational environment, but for our dignity. As a graduate of history, I urge you to cement yourself on the right side of it and celebrate the courageousness of those who stand as their authentic self in the face of those who seek to force us back into the closet. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Matthew Gutierrez.
Welcome.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. So I wanted to bring up some concerns about the curriculum material in one of my theater courses, Theater 100, taught by Anne Shanto. And it's very concerning to me that much of her course material is AI-generated. Almost half of the course material is AI-generated. I have gone through myself. I have asked others to put this material through AI checkers. And it is very concerning because if she herself does not want students to use AI or aid them in creating assignments or answers, why is a teacher allowed to do so to teach, teach a student?
Did you say Columbia or Modesto Junior College, this professor?
This is here at Modesto Junior College.
Thank you.
And I just think it's unprofessional to even put out content to teach that is simply blatantly copied and pasted from ChatGPT. There's course material where she didn't even take out the prompt or the end where it says 4-0 mini ChatGPT at the end. I think it's just blatantly wrong and unethical. I'd like you to take this concern to heart, and please, I do not want any reprimand against this teacher. I just simply, I know it's not in board policies explicitly, but I just think to recommend that there should not be material taught using AI because that is what a teacher is there for. Thank you.
I appreciate, I appreciate your concern. President Sanders, I'm sure there's a process to deal with this. If you'd talk to him offline, that'd be great. But we take your concern very seriously. And I also appreciate you stuck up for the teacher. You just didn't like what's happening. Thank you. Next speaker.
May Rico.
Good evening. My name is May Rico. I am the Executive Director of Healthy Alternatives to Violent Environments. We are a private nonprofit providing services to survivors of domestic violence, sexual assault, and human trafficking in Stanislaus County. And we provide those services regardless of gender, gender expression, sexual orientation, or immigration status. We have been providing services to abuse survivors in this community since 1977. And I am here today in support of Modesto Junior College raising the pride flag. Haven's mission is to support safety in our community. And we know that the most powerful weapon an abuser can use against their victim is making them afraid to seek help. Fear that if they call the police, they'll be deported. Fear that if they try to get a restraining order, they'll lose their children. And fear that if they come to an agency like ours, they'll be outed and turned away. The reason outing is a threat is because the violence and discrimination experienced by members of the LGBTQ community is so common, deadly, and in many cases, legal. They still have to argue why discrimination against them should be outlawed. And we see our leadership at its highest level arguing for legal discrimination against them, actively trying to preserve their right to discriminate. In that environment, why would members of the LGBTQ community trust anyone with their safety? That's why it is so important that you raise the pride flag. When your very existence carries inherent danger, you can't trust systems to help you until they've proven they see you and accept you. That's what the pride flag means. That's the message MJC will be sending to the LGBTQ community. We see you. We accept you, and you are part of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Harlan Divin. Hi, everybody. My name's Harlan Divin.
Welcome.
I am a local Modesto resident, an MJC alumnus, and an attorney. I was a queer student at MJC in the early aughts. I struggled as a queer student at MJC, and I wanted to talk to you today. So YCCD's educational mission includes preparing students for a diverse society and workforce. Visibility and inclusion are not political positions. They're educational imperatives that strengthen the institution's ability to serve all students effectively. MJC's must, mission is empowering students to discover opportunities and reach their goals through access and inclusion in higher education. The first and most critical concept in that mission is to empower students. An idea that is anathema is considered here today, and that is not flying the pride flag at MJC. We are facing an unprecedented humanitarian crisis against transgender Americans. We're only halfway through 2025, yet there are currently 923 pieces of active transgender legislation across the country as of this morning. A nearly tenfold increase from 100 cases, or 100 pieces of legislation just five years ago. This is not a fluke. It represents the most sustained legislative assault on a minority community in modern American history. It is a calculated political effort to disenfranchise some of the most vulnerable members of our communities. And if it can happen to us, it can happen to anyone. In the context of this genuine danger, institutional neutrality becomes institutional cruelty. The college has proudly flown the pride flag in previous years, creating expectations of continued solidarity among LGBTQ students and community members. To withdraw the symbol now, during the most perilous time for transgender people and generations, sends a devastating message. The Board is communicating to students that their silence and invisibility matter more than their humanity. This message reaches transgender students who may be already questioning their safety, sorry, their safety, their belonging, and their worth in an increasingly hostile environment.
Take your time. You're fine. Just relax.
It's upsetting. I'm not nervous. I'm upset.
Got you.
Institutional silence equates to complicity. need to know that their college stands with them, not in calculated neutrality. The psychological impact on transgender students cannot be overstated. These young people face daily messages that their existence is controversial, unwelcome, and worst of all, dangerous. The college's visible solidarity through flying the pride flag provides a critical and important counter-narrative that they belong, that they matter, and that they're safe in this space. And yes, YCCD may face opposition, and yes, that opposition may be uncomfortable. In my experience, when we stand up and fight for the rights of any minority group, it is rarely comfortable, and it is never convenient. LGBTQ individuals and communities will not accept invisibility as the price of institutional comfort. We respectfully but urgently call on this board to restore the pride flag to its rightful place and to stand courageously with some of the most vulnerable and impacted members of this society. We each have a role to play in collective liberation or collective oppression. As a pillar in the community, in the district, and beyond, YCCD must make its commitment to diversity and student empowerment more than words, but a moral imperative and a call to action.
Next speaker.
Good evening, esteemed members of the board. My name is Kai Sadler, and my pronouns are he, they. I stand before you as an out and proud queer and transgender man, and also an alum of Modesto Junior College from the class of 2016. I am here today to speak in favor of rising the pride flag for the month of June. When I attended MJC, I was not aware of my queerness at the time, yet I still shared the school spirit of pirate pride, values of inclusion, respect, and visibility that should define a well-rounded institution of higher learning. In the nine years since I've graduated, pride, and especially pirate pride, has taken on a different and even greater meaning. I was both pleased and impressed when I was made aware that MJC offers resources in the form of club activities, support groups, and counseling members for students who identify under the LGBTQIA+ umbrella. Although having those services on campus readily available is a step towards progress, it is not enough. The queer and trans community has been a historically marginalized group that continues to face consistent discrimination regarding accessibility rights and basic human decency. Queer youth are especially at risk for experiencing bullying, violence, and self-harm. They are sitting in your classrooms, walking your halls, and contributing meaningfully to this campus every day, unsure of who is safe, who will listen, or where they truly belong. Colleges should be places where students not only learn academics, but also empathy, justice, and the power of unity. The average person may ask, why is this issue so important? The answer is both simple and powerful. The pride flag isn't just an object to us, it is a symbol, a visual medium to remind everyone that the measure of a community isn't how it treats the majority, but how it supports and uplifts those who are most vulnerable, the most often overlooked, the most needed of affirmation. It honors the history, struggles, and achievements of individuals who have often had to fight simply for the right to exist openly and authentically. The rainbow fabric of humanity is vast and beautiful. We already celebrate diversity across cultural heritage months and honor a wide array of student identities. Flying the rainbow flag during Pride Month continues that tradition. It doesn't just divide us, it expands our circle of care. I leave you with a quote from Black and transgender woman activist Marsha P. Johnson. History isn't something you look back at and say it was inevitable. It happens because people make decisions that are sometimes very impulsive and of the moment, but those moments are cumulative realities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Sam Osagueda? Osagueda? My apologies. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sam Osagueda. I am a student here at MJC, Modesto Junior College, and part of the School of Behavioral Health and Social Sciences. I am also a proud member of the LGBTQIA+ community and the president of the Parrots Club, a queer pride club here at MJC. Our goal as a club is to provide a safe and social space for LGBTQIA+ students, which there are a lot of. So it is extremely disappointing and disheartening to hear that an attempt to raise the pride flag on the east campus flagpole this Pride Month was shut down. To my knowledge, we have been able to fly this flag before. At the time, the flag wasn't up to code, but now we have one that is, and I find it to be extremely disrespectful and a great disdain to the queer students who attend our school. When I first started here, I remember coming to campus and seeing the MJC pride flags in the quad during the summer. It made me feel like this was a safe place to pursue my education. And I know that those flags are still being allowed on the quad, but knowing that our flag is being denied to fly on the flagpole when it meets the regulations to be up there fills me and my fellow students with disgust. This may seem like something small to people who don't have to feel the fear of judgment or harassment for being who they are. Sorry.
Okay, take your time.
But something this small can mean anything, everything, for the students who feel like they don't belong anywhere else. I want this school to also be something that I am proud of. Our country is already taking a turn to shun the people in my community. Please, I beg you, do not be part of the problem. For the sake of our current students and for the sake of our future students, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Evelyn Winsonston? Okay. Good evening, board members. My name is Evelyn Winsonston. I am a student here at MJC. I am a biology major. I am also a member of the Parrots Club, our MJC LGBTQ+ Alliance, and I echo, I echo my fellow peers' disgust and disappointment at the refusal to fly the pride flag on the flagpole. When I first came here, I was under the impression that this was an environment that was safe for me, that valued me, that wanted me here as a lesbian, and now I feel like that impression is wrong. I don't like that. I don't like that at all. The purpose of a school is to support its student body, and that is your mission, to support the student body. I've loved to see the support of students of different economic backgrounds, different ethnicities, different religions, but you can't pick and choose who you support. You must support all your students, including the queer community, and flying the pride flag will show, will show us, will show us that you mean that support. Please, please support your students.
Thank you.
I'm trying to read the writing. Is it Leo Leon? Okay.
Hello, I am Leo Leon. I am a proud transgender student and Hispanic student of MJC and of this college district that we're in here fighting for, right? So it's come to my attention that we don't have this ability to show our pride on a flagpole where everyone can see that we're supporting who people are, because we're not a choice, we're not a political figure, we're simply humans who fall in love and breathe and decide who we're gonna be. Whether, whether we know it or not, we all come to who we are, and we celebrate everybody on this campus. And I do agree, we can't pick and choose, because if we do, we're sending the message that we're ashamed of a part of a community just because they're at the political center of what's going on in this country. I've been fighting this battle since middle school, but a lot of people won't know until they're older, or some children know when they're young, and you need to show this support and this love for everybody, because not everybody has it at home or in their communities, but when you come to school, you hope that there will at least be respect and acknowledgement that we're here, that we exist. And it's already so difficult walking down the street as somebody who is different, as somebody who's visibly different. And when I came to this school, I also saw the pride flags, and I was like, hey, this is really cool. You don't see this a lot, because a lot of people are scared to show support for something that's so politicized. But I just want to repeat this, we're not a political figure, we're just humans like you, and I really do think it's shameful, it's hurtful, it's disappointing, every single word that describes our feelings, our anger, and our sadness that we are treated differently. We just want a flag to represent who we are for a month that we fought for, and that's all we're asking for, and that's all I have to say, so thank you, and please consider it.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Hello. My name is Kaitlin Ophelia Staley. I'm a psychology student here at MJC. A flag is a symbol, and it represents something deeper. A simple rainbow flag is a sign to queer people everywhere that we are safe and welcome, which is less than true in many places. If MJC chooses to fly the rainbow pride flag this month, it would show a willingness to back up queer students. It would send a message that our school cares about how we feel and welcomes us. A flag is a symbol, and it represents something deeper. When I step foot on campus, I know I stand out as a visibly queer, visibly trans student, and I know I must have my guard raised. If the school were to raise the pride flag, I would feel more protected. This past semester, I was walking down the hallway in Founder's Hall, and someone called me a faggot, which as one might assume was not necessarily an encouraging experience. I didn't say anything. I didn't feel that anyone would care. You have the opportunity to send a different message. A flag is a symbol, and it represents something deeper, and if you won't fly our flag, how are our queer students meant to feel? Certainly not supported, certainly not that our safety matters to MJC administration. A flag is a symbol, and if you choose not to fly it, your choice would show a coldness unbefitting a caring government body, your governing body. Maybe I'm failing to credit each and every one of you for your compassion, but we have yet to see, and there is still time to show your students where you truly stand. I urge you to give us a sign that you care about us. Fly our flag again.
Next speaker.
I believe I have a duplicate from May Rico, so we'll go down, and then someone turned one in without their name, so if there's someone that's... It's okay, it's okay.
No problem.
Hello, I'm the vice president of the Parrots Club, of some of the other members who are up here, and this is like the central part of the meeting today, I'm not gonna give a big speech again. I merely want to ask a question to the people here. What was the reasoning for not flying the flag, the pride flag, this year? Was it because of governmental restraint, federal or state? I just kind of like, I don't want to be accusatory, but I kind of want to know, like, was there a justification or a reason given for doing that?
Well, during public comment, we're not allowed to respond and give answers, but I'm sure either Intimate Chancellor Tran or one of our presidents will be glad to talk to you.
Okay.
Public commentists, so that you can speak and say whatever you want, so that we don't say anything that would cause you not to say what you want to say.
Yeah, well, thank you for that. I don't have anything new to say that other very fine people have been able to say, so thank you for the best opportunity, and thank you to have one who's spoken on behalf.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone that didn't fill out a card that would like to speak? Is there any other public comment on any other item not on the agenda? Okay, I'll close the public comment, and I just want to say that we really appreciate your coming out, we appreciate your courage, and we appreciate the things you said, and we'll certainly consider all the things that you said, so thank you very much. Okay, moving on to item five, we'll talk about the consent agenda. Does any member of the public have anything to say about any consent items? Does any board member want to pull anything from the consent agenda, except when we get to you with the retirees? Okay, with that, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
My trustee Garrett, is there a second?
I second the motion.
Trustee Nicolau, please call the roll.
Can I make a brief comment first?
Do we do that before or after?
Usually before.
Standing corrected, thank you.
As customary, we want to recognize our retirees. We have one on the agenda this evening, Glenn Stowall, 25 years of service, director of Rise Up Center, Rise Up Center Student Services, Modesto Junior College. I'm sure Glenn had had a lot of interaction with a lot of the students that spoke this evening, and had a lot of impact in those 25 years of helping those students, and I'm sure Vice President of Student Service, Dr. Wilson, can attest to that. I just want to commend Glenn for everything that he did for our students, helping them achieve their higher education goals, and I wish Glenn all the best in his retirement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, could you call the roll, please?
Trustee Beggs? Aye. Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
Vice President Nicolau?
Aye.
President Richards?
Yes.
Assie Aguilar? Oh, did he step out, sorry. The vote is six in favor, zero opposed, one not present, motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, item six. The recommended action is that the Board of Trustees adopts the 2025-26 General Fund Tentative Budget for the Seminole Community College District as attached to the June 11, 2025 agenda, and direct staff to file with the Stanislaus County Superintendent of Schools by July 1, 2025. He just started!
That's about right. Well, thank you for this opportunity to, I will try. Thank you for the opportunity to present the information for 2526 tentative budget. I'll go quickly through some of these items. What we have in the orange box is the governor's may revise. We've already moved ourselves far past that. We've even heard from the legislature that they have proposed back to the governor their changes that they would like to see in the budget. So we're now waiting for the governor to sign the state budget, hopefully by the end of June, and so we're well along in this budget process. So the tentative budget that's before you provides us the spending authority for our new fiscal year that begins... new fiscal year that begins on July 1. The numbers in the budget booklet are actually based on the January budget proposal because of the proximity from the May revise to when we need to bring this information to you. So the May revise and what goes into the final state budget will be presented to the board in the final budget, which will be brought back to you in September. So I do want to point out that there are some challenges in our budget this year that haven't been present in the last couple of years. We've actually had to reduce certain areas that have provided some fiscal stability within our budget. Those include eliminating $1 million retiree health benefits trust contribution. That one's good because we are nearly fully funded as it relates to our retiree healthcare benefits. We have reduced our deficit factor down from 2.5% to 2%. And again, where we haven't always seen the deficit at the end of the year, there have been projections during the middle of the year where there might not be enough state resources to fund us on all the revenue that's been promised to us. Over the last several years, we've made a specific effort to provide more ongoing budget to MJC, to correct the budget imbalance. And unfortunately, we have not been able to put that in at the tentative budget. And we've moved some total cost of owner expense, total cost of ownership expenses for IT and facilities to one-time expenses. We're hopeful that the state budget that will be signed in the next couple of weeks will provide us a little more flexibility to put a few of these items back in to the regular ongoing side of the House once we get that state budget. So we developed a budget for the fiscal year utilizing our resource allocation model that is developed and reviewed through the District Fiscal Advisory Council. We do our best to provide all the reasonable projections that we have available to us as it relates to healthcare, pension, salary information, any contract... Contractual agreements that have been completed with our bargaining unit groups. We do distinguish between ongoing and one-time revenues. And over the years, we've been really good at finding efficiencies to help improve services and lower costs. So here is the listing of our total revenue. And again, these are for the most part, ongoing resources. We have been able to adjust our revenues upwards to... As our FTEES has increased, we have been able to achieve higher revenues. Our interest income continues to be high, and so we have moved that number upwards. And that 163.4 million of ongoing revenue, you can see how it relates to our total ongoing unrestricted general fund expenditures in line nine. 163.4 million. So again, ongoing revenue, 163.4 million. Ongoing expense rounded off, 163.4 million. Great news is we have a balanced budget. But to get to that balanced budget, we had to go through those changes that I had mentioned a slide or two before. So it is concerning. We are getting tighter and tighter as it relates to the budget here for YCCD. We do have some one-time expenditures that are listed out below. And the primary one to highlight is to, because we were not able to provide ongoing resources to MJC to help them with the schedule, we have done some one-time expenditures in that direction. As it relates to our ending fund balance, we do anticipate remaining above the two months of reserves that's required based on our board policy. And as I've expressed several times before, although we allocate the budget, not every single dollar and every single cent is spent. And when we have those efficiencies, so it is likely that our ending fund balance will end up higher than that 34.2 million. But it is on target for now. So what did we hear from the governor in May? The state is now projecting a deficit of $12 billion. To help us with our budget, without cutting our budget, they are including reductions, borrowing, and fund shifts to help balance the state budget, which also impacts what we get. The COLA did come down from, I believe it was 2.43 in January, down to 2.3%, which will impact our apportionment revenue. And the good news is that COLA will also be attributed to several categorical programs. One great thing is there's a 2.35% enrollment growth available for the upcoming fiscal year. We've grown our FTS so much in the last couple of years that in this current fiscal year, we actually are serving students that we're not getting paid for. So it's vital that we continue to offer those courses, and it's great to see that the state will be providing more resources in that way. There is, hopefully what will show up in that final state signed budget is some one-time funding to fully fund the Student Center Funding Formula in 24-25. So although that won't help us with our unfunded FTEES, it will help us with that deficit factor that we built into the budget. And there will be the expectation that those dollars will be fully available to us. And with that, are there any questions about the tentative budget? So what I went through primarily there was the unrestricted general fund in your budget packet that you have available is all the other funds of the district. And so we're bringing that to you forward tonight for approval.
Let me open it up to the public to see if there's any questions before we entertain questions from the trustees. Anyone from the public wishing to make a comment or ask a question? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the dais, comments, questions?
No, just that we went over it in more detail in the Board Finance Committee meeting, and the Finance Committee is recommending adoption this evening.
Other comments? Do I have a motion to approve? Second? Is there a second? So trustee Garrett and trustee Davis, please call the roll.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
Vice President Nicolau stepped out of the room. President Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Aguilar?
Aye.
And trustee Beggs?
Aye.
Vote is six in favor, zero opposed, one not present. Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work, trustee, vice chancellor. Okay, 6.2 is the YCCD Resolution Number 24-25-20, establish the 2025-26 appropriation limit, known as the GAN limit. The recommended action is that the Board of Trustees adopt the YCC Resolution 24-25-20, establishing the appropriation limit for fiscal year 25-26, GAN limit of 132,000, 132 million, 400,486. It's a big number. As attached to the June 11th, 2025 Agenda. Anyone from the public want to comment on this issue? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for questions, comments?
So moved.
We have a motion by trustee Garrett. Do we have a second? Second by trustee Davis. I'll, we have a roll call, right? Again.
Thank you. Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
President Nicolau?
Yes.
President Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Aguilar?
Aye.
Trustee Beggs?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
The vote is unanimous, motion carries.
Okay, moving on to 6.3, Proposition 30, Education Protection Act, EPA. The recommended action is that the Board of Trustees approves the expenditure of EPA funds as instructional salaries and benefits as noted on the June 11th, 2025 Agenda. It is important to note that this is not new or increased revenue, but rather a new source of revenue towards total apportionment. Anyone from the public want to comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais, comments?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Garrett, do we have a second? Second trustee Aguilar, please call the roll.
Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
Vice President Nicolau?
Yes.
President Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Aguilar?
Aye.
Trustee Beggs?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Vote is unanimous, motion carries.
Moving on to 6.4, it's the five-year construction plan that the Board of Trustees receives a plan and approves it for submission to the California Community College Chancellor's Office per Board Policy 3600 capital construction. Anyone from the public wishing to comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for comments or questions. I'll entertain a motion to approve? Trustee Aguilar, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee, we'll give it to trustee Hinton. Please, please call the roll.
Vice President Nicolau?
Yes.
Vice President Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Aguilar?
Yes.
Trustee Beggs?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
The vote is unanimous, motion carries.
Great. Moving on to 6.5, YCC Resolution Number 24-25.23, declare and authorize disposition of surplus property. That the Board of Trustees adopts YCCD Resolution Number 24-25.23, declaring the listed property in Exhibit A as surplus and direct staff to take appropriate action as per Education Code Section 81-450, as attached to the June 11th, 2025 Agenda. Anyone from the public want to comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for a motion?
So moved.
Trustee Garrett, do we have a second?
Again.
Trustee Davis, please call the roll.
President Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Aguilar?
Aye.
Trustee Beggs?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
President Nicolau?
Aye.
The vote is unanimous, motion carries.
Moving on to 6.6, Modesto Junior College and Career Access Pathway CCAP partnership agreement, Newman's Crows Landing United School District. Anyone from the public want to comment? Seeing none, bring it back to the board.
Move for approval. Always appreciate seeing these.
I was hoping you would do that. Do we have a second?
Second.
This will give to Jenny. She got in first. Okay, please call the roll.
Trustee Aguilar?
Aye.
Trustee Beggs?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
President Nicolau?
Aye.
President Richards?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous, motion carries.
6.7, Out of the Country Travel, Modesto Junior College, National Geographic Society, Johannesburg, South Africa. I've been there, and I just watched a movie about this kind of stuff. This is pretty exciting that we got a professor wanting to do this. So, that the Board of Trustees approves out-of-the-country travel for Professor Deborah Bolter to serve as the lead scientist to study newly excavated fossils in collaboration with the National Geographic Society and the University of Worcester Waterrand in Johannesburg, South Africa from June 16th, 2025 to July 17th, 2025, as listed on the June 11th, 2025 Agenda. I'll add one thing to this. I hope she comes in and makes a presentation and shows us all the stuff, and brings me a souvenir from South Africa. I guess I'm not supposed to say that, but... Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Trustee Aguilar, trustee Beggs, please call the roll.
Trustee Beggs?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Trustee Hinton?
Aye.
President Nicolau?
Aye.
President Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Aguilar?
Aye.
The vote is seven, zero, motion carries.
Okay, moving on to 7.1, Board Committee Reports. Trustee Garrett, anything to report?
No, just what I previously mentioned, that we went over the budget which was just approved was the highlight of the evening, so nothing...
Thank you very much. The Board Policy Committee Report, trustee Beggs, anything to report?
I'm reporting that we haven't met.
Very good. Also, I know you have a report for this, Modesto Junior College Foundation Report.
We had our last meeting of the fiscal year yesterday. The MJC Foundation has an impact report coming out in July. The Foundation is also working with various schools and programs on, believe it or not, 25 to 26 events that are coming up this fall. The Foundation helps in fundraising and outreach strategies for these events. So they're very busy even in the summer.
Thank you. Moving on, Columbia College Foundation Report, Dr. Davis, anything to report?
Yes, thank you. So as you recall, last month, we had a presentation regarding scholarships and from both foundations also were here, and they shared the status of scholarships from both of the foundations. But last month, we had our foundation meeting up at Columbia. And I'll just say that the foundation is strong, membership is strong. In fact, they installed three new community members to the foundation board at their last meeting. And I would also say that they, when they give a financial report, when they gave it this last time, they provided context, and they shared, oh, you know, balances and the funds at different foundations across the state at different community colleges. For a small community college, it's outperforming many of the foundations at much larger community colleges. So I was just very proud of the work that they're doing up there on behalf of the students and helping students, you know, get through college with a little bit less of a burden financially.
Thank you. Also, could you tell us about the Association of Stanislaus County School Boards?
I have a report this month, we did not have a meeting.
Very good. Item six, Valley Insurance Program Joint Powers Agency Report, anything to report, trustee Garrett?
We had a regional meeting last Thursday at Merced Community College. Myself and Vice Chancellor Stewart were there. I'm happy to report that, you know, we're still on very solid ground with our activity, both in the viability side of the house and work comp. We got our new rates for those areas. They're going up slightly, but we're doing a great job. I want to commend our risk management unit at Central Services. We get compliments all the time on what a great job they're doing. So that was pretty much the highlight. Anything you want to add? Okay.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to association reports. I have the pleasure of introducing the recently elected new faculty liaison to the board, Stephen Joy. Welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, that's right. He needs some applause. He just got elected. Very good, very good.
There's no report.
Thank you. A little anticlimactic, but we appreciate that. Okay, Academic Senate Reports, is Eric Gandell here? Okay, I assume he'll send something in. Giselle Professor Flores, are you here for Modesto Junior College? Thank you.
Good evening. Happy Pride Month. It was a beautiful sight to see pride flags flown high on our east campus quad, and I have already received messages from faculty and students stating how welcome the flags made students feel. The hope is that this representation, which is aligned with our student equity plan, extends to a flag on our main flagpole under the American flag, as it does on so many other college campuses across California, including our neighbor and competition, Delta College. Any new policies or procedures that are developed for deciding what flags are flown at each individual campus should go through the shared governance process, and should not be at the sole discretion of a single board or interim chancellor. I hope you truly and genuinely heard the advocacy of students and community members who spoke tonight, and will remember their faces when making future decisions for our college. Secondly, due to faculty being off-contract in the summer, I have not had an opportunity to request a formal motion to support our classified colleagues. But as an individual, I stand with my classified friends and colleagues, and could not do my job without them. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next is the Yosemite Faculty Association, YFA President, Optimus One.
Hello again. Good evening, Chancellor Tran. Is Chancellor Yong still here? I don't know. Board of Trustees, you've heard my three main points in favor of eliminating trailing median in exchange for RSI. And I hope you'll continue to refer to the handout I gave you in the previous open session to help you arrive at a similar conclusion. I also want to clarify that the YFA proposal you saw was sent to the district's negotiations team several weeks before our negotiation meeting a few days ago. So some of that could be updated for sure on what is possible. In addition, I want to let you know about a survey that YFA conducted with our membership. Out of 200 faculty members who responded, we did receive a handful of responses from faculty who say they already do most of what the ACCJC now requires. Another faculty member says, "My desire is for students to succeed, therefore I will do whatever is necessary." While these positive sentiments are admirable, in contrast, we received many more responses in protest of the encroachments on academic freedom and the significant ongoing addition... and the significant ongoing addition to their workloads. For example, one faculty member says, "The standards do not consider those of us who teach 40-plus students per class, which ends up being often over 200 students a semester. Anything meaningful cannot be done in the manner they are requiring. If they truly want this kind of contact, then let's be honest, we will need to reduce caps from 40 to at least 30 for all classes that require such a high cap. And since they are not considering that AI usage has blown up the time we take to assess student work and discussions, all I see is people who simply don't care about the workload of those of us who teach critical thinking and who have the heaviest load of students." Another faculty member writes, "As a part-timer, while some of these expectations are already happening in my courses, the increased expectations participating in discussions, preparing video lectures, and synchronous weekly Zooms would further require more dedication for me, thus requiring more time in my courses. I am already receiving less than full-timers, though I teach the same courses during the same semester. These expectations would need to be met with an increase of pay in order for it to be fair and just. Please do everything you can to ensure that part-timers are paid fairly for these adjustments. In closing, I am confident in the board's interest in student success and in faculty's ability to deliver top-notch instruction, online or otherwise. Therefore, my hope is that we can get RSI on the books and soon, even before mediation, even with creative approaches to our proposal. YFA is ready to put this issue to bed. Thank you for your time."
Thank you. I should mention that there is no report from the Leadership Team Advisory Council. Now, we'll move on to the Classified Senate Activity Reports. Is President Abby Sunday here?
She emailed me saying that.
Email her. Okay, thank you. How about Amanda Cannon? I know you're here. And she's the Modesto Junior College Classified Senate President.
Yes. Good evening, Board. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to report out. Although I do report for Classified Senate, I also, we are all Classified Senate, but we are also CSCE, and I just want to thank everybody who's here tonight for coming to support us. That's wonderful. There have been some, as you can see probably from the different people in the audience today, there have been some really difficult conversations that have been happening on our campus. One of the things that I learned during those conversations is that classified have a deep respect for each other. We support each other. We don't always disagree, but we always just, we tend to disagree respectfully. One of the things that came out of some of those difficult conversations for Classified Senate specifically is there is a disconnect between classified and the board. It's something that we are just going to put out there. It's something that can be bridged. It's something that can be fixed. And so, I come to you yet again with the request for some action for a classified liaison to the board. There's a perspective that's missing, and we would love the ability to close that gap for the district altogether. One of the things that we're going to do tomorrow is we're meeting as classified leadership, and Abby Sunday, the Classified Senate President for Columbia, and myself are going to give a session on specifically Classified Senate, what the responsibilities of Classified Senate, what the responsibilities of Classified of CSCE. Because one of the things we don't want to lose is we don't want to lose our power to apathy, and that tends to happen when people don't feel heard and people don't feel respected. So, I just really look forward to the opportunity to continue serving our Classified Senate on the campus, but also speaking to you every month and being given that opportunity. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. The next is the California School of Plays Association. And Sabino, he's always here first. Sabino? You've been waiting a long time.
Good evening, Chancellor Tran, President Richards, and trustees.
See, they're even applauding you.
Okay, so first, I would like to begin by congratulating interim Chancellor Tran. I look forward to working with you in your new role, as well all the classified members. As President of YCCD Chapter 420, it is our collective responsibility to ensure that the district and the board trustees recognize and affirm the vital role that the classified professionals play in promoting student success. I cannot begin to express to you how foundational we are to the success of our students in the College of YCCD. The lives do not stay on, students are not enrolled. Financially, it's not processed. Athletes can't play on safe fields. The campus is not secure. Airline is not processed. Housing sanitation is not kept. Without classified professionals, these are just a few key roles that we play in our district. The classified professionals are here at YCCD, have unwavering dedication and passion for our students and our community. They have passion for MPC and Columbia College and their respect to communities. Many want to stay here to serve this Yosemite Community College District for their entire career. The reality is that passion alone doesn't pay all the bills. Many of classified professionals have two or three jobs to make and need. Our members are deeply disappointed and displeased by the district's latest proposal, which was presented to our negotiation team just weeks after the district celebrated us during the Classified School Employee Week. Our members are here tonight to respectfully share this message with you. We're asking the district to honor the contract language that reflects equity, respect, and value that the district has for our classified professionals. We're asking the district to uphold the contract language that they agreed to address fairly, provide the 8.709 percentage wage increase that was granted to the YFA bargaining unit in June of 2024. In conclusion, I would like to express sincere gratitude to all the members of CSCE, YCCD Chapter 420, who are in attendance. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Now, moving on to 8.2, Presentation and Updates, Yosemite Community College, District Inom Chancellor Tran, your first report.
Thank you, President Richards. As I hear everybody come up and speak, it gets really emotional to me. And honestly, I don't share personal lives of my family, but I do want to let you know that I absolutely support pride because my husband and I, both of our family, have two. Two of our nieces are gay. So, we do support that. Now, the thing is that you don't want to fly your flag under the American flag, under the California flag. I would like our district to have two poles, where you fly your flag proudly up top, because it's not just the pride flag. I'm Vietnamese. We have the fall of Saigon. It's our dark day, April 30. We have Black History Month. We have Asian Heritage Month. So, I think we don't do ourselves a service, and please do not be misunderstood. We want to honor all Infinity groups, but to fly our individual flag under the American flag and the California flag is not a message really, truly. I would work with our presidents and also our facility to have two separate poles, so every month, we have different celebration and leave that up, because you want to fly high. Because I know my nieces go through it. I go through it as a minority. So, I want to comment on that. We fully support all the communities, so truly, we serve every single student. So, my cabinet, with along with our facility, we will make that happen. We will put two pole in so that every flag can be flown. So, that is a promise, everybody. So, that's so far from my first week on the job. But I do want to say thank you for your heart, your dedication. If you didn't come here to show how you care with CSCE, classified, and my role is to be the bridge builder, to bring communication, to bring understanding, and most importantly, is to bring solutions. And sometimes, we have to compromise. So, if you can be, please, patient, all that will get through. And then, also, my first week, I just want to say we really have a wonderful team at the district. I was well-welcome. Everybody's very, I love my cabinet. But a big shout-out to the two individuals that I'm sitting here seeing in my corner, which is Grassella and Kim. I don't think... Trust me, when someone say, "You don't know what the work is done behind Chancellor's office", so I thank you for that. At this time, we don't have the Columbia College present because we are doing a recruitment. It is the goal. We will conduct interview next week, and we will conclude, and hopefully, we have our interim president for Columbia College by the end of June. So, that's our goal. And at this time, I would turn it over to our President Sanders for a little twist in the update.
Right. Well, first, I want to give my MJC update from this posted note to keep it brief. Just a couple of quick things to alert you to. A few weeks ago, we went out to Patterson and had a chance to participate in the Patterson Apricot Festival Parade, and it was really, really well-done. It was going along, and then somebody starts yelling my name, and then Grassella starts waving, so we had some MJC. And people were shouting out their graduation year as MJC proud, MJC graduates and from the Patterson area. It was fantastic. Last weekend, we hosted the American Graffiti Car Show here at MJC with 1,000, 1,200 classic cars. And then, on Sunday, a bunch of new cars came in. Really a fantastic time. Our campus was a showcase for the community. And I just really want to commend our facility staff who put in a lot of extra time and energy to make that happen. They cleaned things up. They trimmed the bushes, did all of this extra work to make it a great place, and so, MJC shined. Third thing is that MJC's administrative team went through a tabletop exercise yesterday with Modesto Fire Department, Modesto Police Department, preparing for emergencies. We need to make sure that our team is properly prepared and trained to succeed when something bad happens, and we're ready. And then, lastly, we are in planning season. So, tomorrow, I'm looking forward to talking with our classified professionals at their retreat. The MJC executive team is having its planning retreat at CSU Stanislas. And then, later on in the summer, we have the dean's team is having another planning retreat as well. So, I think they're going to Scoey as a facility, so. Clicker is going. So, Dr. Tran, we're talking about how to make our board meetings a little different, and so, we thought we'd do some more opportunities to show some information and then to take any questions that you might have. And instead of me writing a bunch of words on the screen, we're going to do it with pictures. And this picture happens to show a lot of numbers. This is a picture, this screen here, without any color to it, was one of the original graphics, one of the original tools that we had to manage the enrollment at Modesto Junior College and Columbia College. We touched it up a little bit, but I think a lot of people see this collection of numbers and have a reaction to it. Now, that's your initial reaction. Maybe there's a follow-up reaction, though, is to start thinking about, well, what's that minus 3 mean? And reading the headers of, you know, three weeks before the start. I'm a mathematician, so when I helped build this graph, negative 3 means 3 before, and then that goes along. So, maybe we can do some pictures of this data, and maybe that would be a better way for us to tell the story of how our enrollment is going. So, these guys, the employees of the college, I've sent these pictures around for years. I give them a long version and a short version. Tonight's the medium version. But they've gotten to where, over time, they can see these trends that show what MJC's enrollment is, what Columbia College's enrollment is in looking at that. So, you know, if we look at some details, if you look to the left-hand side of the graph there, that's when registration begins and students start to sign up for classes. So, this is the collective across all of our classes. When we get to, you know, the filling portion here, we're getting up there. That orange vertical line is when the semester begins. So, we've got this moment, and then we go through 16 weeks of class, and then we get to the end of the semester. And when you look at these things enough time, you can really get to see these trend lines and see the patterns and see the behaviors, and you see within that some of the behaviors of faculty and behaviors of students and how things kind of go. And so, you start to ask why. So, I was wondering, in staring at the pictures up there, have any of the trustees had any why questions on peaks or valleys or jumps or anything else that jumps out at you? Yes, sir? Why the peaks and the valleys? Well... Common peak there just after the semester begins. Yeah? So, the one right after the semester begins, thank you, Grassella, is when the semester begins, the waitlists are full, but students aren't yet enrolled in those waitlisted slots. So, we have some students that were in our classes. Then they withdrew. It created some vacancies. And then, students on the waitlist, the professors, go above and beyond to bring in extra students above the course cap. And that is the huge spike. And we get that at the end of the first week every semester. Whenever that doesn't happen, it freaks me out. Why does it fall off over the next two weeks? Well, two weeks later, as it trickles down a little bit, that's when census happens. So, the students are, you know, fish or cut bait moment. They're in the course. After a couple of weeks, maybe they decide this isn't the right class for them, and so, they choose to withdraw. The students who have not shown up are dropped from their class for non-attendance by their instructors, and so, that kind of cleans it down. But then, once we make it to census, that's our dollars as well. Once we make it to the census point, that third week of the semester, our courses are locked in. The state pays us for the enrollments that happen on Census Day, so our enrollment is there. And then, finally, if we're going to look at the far side, go ahead, Don. Yep. Why did... The big orange line on the left-hand side? Yeah. So, a good question on the why is, why does it look like it's further left? It's actually just starting registration earlier. A couple of years ago, we decided that it would be smarter for us to enroll students before the spring semester ends for the upcoming fall, rather than wait till the middle of the summer when they've gotten distracted. And so, you can see that that's working. We started earlier. More students are getting registered in. And so, at this point, if you kind of look up that red line, it kind of looks like we're going to be higher in, by the time we get to the first week of the semester. But we don't know yet from that picture. We won't know what that behavior is until we actually arrive at that point. It could taper back down and be roughly where the pink squares are. But lastly, I wanted to point to the far right-hand side of the graph, where you see the pink kind of rises up and the purple dots rise up. We have this, I mentioned census. Some of our classes use positive attendance, and that means we count up the total hours that students are in class, and those get submitted by our faculty at the very end of the semester and get recorded over about a two-week period of time, which is why those things bop up and then keep going. So, lots of pictures, right? Lots of consistency. Well, other thing that we use in these graphs is color. So, you can see on the left, those are our summer graphs when it's nice and sunny. Then we get into fall colors, and so, we use the oranges there. We go into the green ones there for spring as the rains come. It does allow us to compare year over year in between colleges. We can see what the trends are. We can see what the behaviors of the students. So, here's MJC's summer trends, and you can barely see that red triangles up there on the top or about five weeks into summer. But if you look closely, you might see that it's above all the other ones, right? Which is a good sign. It's telling us that MJC's enrollment[1752.86] It's telling us that MJC's enrollment is currently higher than it's been for the last five years. What this doesn't tell us, though, is that it's bigger, more than it's ever been in the history of the college. We were to draw all the lines, when we won't because we've got about 20 of them, it would be above all of them. Same thing at Columbia College. The summer enrollment is at the highest point that it's been ever. Little different enrollment, some dynamics there in Columbia the last couple of summers, just how things go. And fall, same kind of behavior, right? MJC is going in earlier, rising up quicker. We're hopefully going to be up above where the semester's been-- this is Columbia, sorry. Columbia fall is going to be also above where it has been in previous years. We expect that number to be high. And then MJC also, we're going to expect that number to be high. One thing I might mention, if you look at-- just at the yellow line there on the pink squares and the purple circles, you can see how it dips right there? That's our drop for non-payment. Remember, under board policy, we're dropping students who have not paid for their fees before the semester begins because we can't drop them after the semester begins. And what we see is that's a significant drop in the FTES counts. But those free-up seats and the students who are on the waitlist, our faculty, again, add more students in, and we more than recover that in rising up in the following week. Okay? So we've talked about that. We do want to do some behaviors, some different policies to make it so that we don't-- because I look at that, and I think of students. I think of this person who's in our class and really needs that pre-nursing class, and they got dropped right before the semester because they just didn't pay attention to the 12 emails that we send them that said, "Pay your fees." So I've-- you know, I feel mercy for them. But I think we could maybe do a different policy that would get us there. Columbia-- MJC's spring trends, you can see that were higher than we have been in the past few years. These numbers, I mentioned, summer is higher than ever. If I was to put up the last 20 years, both fall and spring at both colleges are not as high as they were in 2011. There's some higher figures that occurred then. So we take these trends and we look at them. But there's another graph. Jeremy's sitting back here, you're our Excel wizard. And Jeremy took some of this information and said, "Well, that idea of looking at where we are compared to previous years is a good one. So what do we see here?" Well, this tells us that as of week negative 11-- that's not just a hyphen, that's a mathematical-- negative 11. So 11 weeks before the fall semester begins, we have more students registered than ever before. There's that little red line. By a lot. It's really pretty dramatically different. Same thing at Columbia College. Same thing happens in summer. Columbia is just barely above where they were last year, but that's showing the last 20 years, back to 2007, bigger than has ever been in the history of the college. And here, MJC also bigger than it has been in the history of the college. And the last piece I wanted to show you is this graph that Mary Bauschmo put together several years ago. We've been working on it and using it as a way to set our targets at the beginning of the year. You see that at the top of the graph. And then down at the bottom, you can see what we generate in each of the terms, summer, fall, spring, and early summer, and then how that totals out for the colleges. So in 2223, you can see that we set a target of 16,315, and we missed it. We ended up at 14,588 because COVID. And then the next year, we're getting better. So we set our 16,315 as our target, and we still missed it, but we went up to 15,795. That's about 1,200 FTS increase in one year, which is dramatic. And then this year, we saw that the state was going to provide some growth opportunity for us. So we set our target higher, not at the pre-COVID 16,315, but at 16,478, and we blew right by it. We ended up with 16,641. So that makes us then ask, well, what should our targets be for this year? And we've started those conversations at Executive Cabinet, the Chancellor's Cabinet. What are we going to aim for? And it's tricky because last year, half a percent was available, but we got more than that on the books, which means if we offer the same collection of classes next year, we'll get the same amount, which is more than we were funded for last year, but less than the target. So we have to go higher, but we're not exactly sure how much higher to go. So it's a little tricky. And I think that's kind of the takeaways. But as you're talking with folks in the community, people will ask you, "How's our enrollment at the college?" Enrollment is very strong. Summer, best we've ever had. Fall is looking really good. We won't know for sure until the fall begins, but we do want to make sure that we are poised to get as much resources from the state as we possibly can and maximize our growth revenue. Questions?
Thank you very much. Okay. Moving on to the travel report. That's included in your packet. Now we're to board comments. First, anybody have any requests for future board agenda items? Looking to the right. Looking to the left. Go ahead, Trustee.
I have-- that was really helpful, seeing the front end, the growth. I'm still interested in seeing how we're doing with retention at the other end. How many students are persisting and what we're doing to help students complete what they've started? Because a lot make it past Census Day, and then other things happen.
Okay. Now we'll move on to 9.2, comments from the Board of Trustees, starting with Trustee Aguilar. Anything?
Thank you for everybody, all you guys, young kids, for coming and speaking to us. We appreciate that. You're-- that was it. That's it.
Trustee Banks?
I was able to attend the Central Valley AI Innovation Forum. "Shaping Our Regional Future" was the subtitle. It was fascinating. I met some really interesting people. We had people from industry, some entrepreneurs, local businesses. The panels-- well, Brian was there. The panels were very interesting. I'm thankful that Emily Lawrence of the MJC Foundation and Dr. Tran got this thing going, and the state chancellor was there. It was very interesting, and it was great for our community to see the-- to be part of what MJC is doing with the community. It's great to see that kind of joint event, and I hope we see more joint events in the future.
Trustee Garrett?
Yeah, I just want to say, I've been on this board for over eight years now. And in that time, I've never had a student trustee tell us there's a broad problem with the, you know, the way the board or the college is representing its students. Never had that happen. I don't like controversy, especially when it's silly and stupid. So I don't ever want to see this happen again. You know, if we need to come up with some money for a flagpole, great, let's do it. But I don't ever want to see students come up to us ever again en masse and say, "You're not representing us," because that is who we serve. And this is not a government body. You know, we're not a military base. I mean, we are a community college, and we serve the community. And for me to hear that this is how the students feel, I'm heartbroken. And as I've said before, this is coming from a guy that got shot at for a living. So, you know, when something moves me to this level, I'm not happy. So, you know, fix it. And this idea that, well, we'll put-- that doesn't solve the problem now. So I want something where we have a flag policy, and if it takes a new flagpole, you know, at each one of the colleges and maybe at Central Services, let's do it. But again, it doesn't fix the problem now. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Davis?
If someone were to ask me to summarize tonight's mood and just the comments, the word I would use is respectful. And I just want to really commend everyone who spoke either in public comments or in the committee reports. That takes bravery. I took a ton of notes. You all spoke from the heart, very passionate, and you were very respectful. And I think messages are just so much better received when it comes from an area of respect. So I want to thank you all for your bravery and for your comments.
I couldn't have said it better myself. The next regular meeting of the Board of Trustees will be held on Wednesday, July 9, 2025. Closed session will begin at 3:00 PM and open session at 5:30 PM in the Yosemite Community College District Boardroom, 201 Blue Gum Avenue in Modesto, California. Yes?
Trustee Hinton?
No, she told me she didn't have any.
Okay, thank you.
We're adjourned. Don't question me.